Fourth, the time is 6:30. Guy Tanza online is Shelby. Peter Barris is also online, as are the folks from Fact TV. First up is review changes to the agenda, if any. I had a couple of changes to make. 6A, the budget planning schedule. I had wanted to table until November 18th because we don't have enough information yet from Samara to really be able to plan a meeting. So I will table that until the 18th. Hopefully, we'll have enough to be able to set something up at that point. And also, I forgot to put in, and this is probably on Bruce's list, I forgot to put in a building update, so let's add a 7C for building update. Those were the changes I had. Gwen, did you have any changes to the agenda?
No.
Bruce, any changes to the agenda? Shelby, any changes to the agenda for you?
I don't know.
Okay. All right, then moving on to scheduled members of the public. There are none. Unscheduled members of the public, there is no one here other than the people that I've noted. There's no one online other than the people that I've already noted. First up then, next up is approving the minutes. First are the minutes from the October 21st regular meeting. I had just a few things on page one. Peter, under the road line striping, the third paragraph, Mr. Jones moved to approve painting double yellow center lines. Probably center lines is probably two words, so just add a space there. Under the next section, the grants and aid letter of intent towards the end, second by, it should be Ms. Tanza, just a type of our A. And then, under the last section on that page, the very last sentence says that this would be covered by the grants, grant singular, I think is probably what it should be. Then, on page two, the very first sentence, Brookline should be capitalized. Then down under the building update, the second paragraph.
That's all right.
That's okay. The very first sentence on the second page, Mr. Jones moved to sign and approve the business card resolution form for the town of Brookline, just Brookline, capitalized Brookline.
Oh, got it. Thank you.
Yep. Down under the building update, the second paragraph, the end of the first sentence, after Steve Haskins, there should just be a period.
Wow. Why? My glasses.
And then, down under, just for formatting purposes, down under highway and roads, about near the end of the third sentence, just the word "the" is large and just removes the spacing off a little bit. He just fixed the size of the word "the." And that's...
On grants, what was your thing?
Yeah, back, just the very, under the increased credit card limit, the last sentence, it says that this would be covered by the grants, it should just be grants, the word "grant," they just said "t" instead of the "s."
Got it. Thank you.
There might be a s, yeah. Oh, that's good. Those were the only changes that I had. Gwen, did you have any other changes other than what I noted?
No.
Bruce, any other changes?
Page one.
Yep.
Page one, executive session, second line, Mr. Jones, and move to enter executive session.
Oh, yeah, okay, right. So, yeah, so, under executive session...
Get rid of the "and."
Yeah, get rid of the "and." Yep, good question. Anything else, Bruce?
Yeah, Road Salt Vender, wait a minute. I'm sorry. There was discussion of quotes from vendors, is that right? Of a quotes from vendors?
Oh, yeah, I guess, just, yeah, you see that? Road Salt Vender, just, there's discussion of, just take out the "a."
I failed English. Remind me to explain that.
Anything else, Bruce?
Nope.
Good, okay.
I'm not there for teachers.
I'm not going to let him hear that.
What did he say? He says it now?
No, I said they're looking for teachers. We wouldn't want to do that to kids. It's hard enough right now. Shelby, any changes to the minutes for you other than what we've noted?
I don't know.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from October 21st as amended. Is there a second? Seconded by Gwen. Any further discussion? Here are none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from October 21st as amended signify by saying "aye." Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions?
Any.
All right, so one extension, and those are approved. Then we move on to the minutes from the October 28th special meeting. Any, I actually didn't print them out.
I'm graded, though.
Okay. I guess I, were there any changes that you noted? All right, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the October 28th special meeting as presented. Is there a second?
No second.
Seconded by Gwen.
It's working.
Any changes that you noticed on numbers?
No.
Okay. All right, then, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the October 28th special meeting as presented signify by saying "aye." Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions?
Any.
All right.
What is the noise that is, okay, I just want to clarify, I'm just kind of curious. Do you know how when it's "aye," nay, like, what are you supposed to say when it's an extension? I didn't know for, like, rules of war, I was just kind of curious if there's, like, a specific way you should respond for an extension.
No, I think you just indicate, you just indicate something.
Okay. Sorry.
I mean, probably "aye," probably "aye" or whatever, too.
Okay, cool.
Because you're indicating any affirmative that you're abstaining, so. Sorry, what was up here?
Oh, I thought it worked. Years ago, I heard people say abstaining in meetings, because they were abstaining, they just said abstaining.
That, that a point?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have the minutes for the 28th, was that something you did?
Yeah, I did, I did those. They were three sentences long.
Right, that's what I did.
Okay, so both of those are approved. Then, moving on to new business. So we tabled 6A on the budget planning schedule until the next meeting, which brings us to 7 to 6B, which was to discuss waiving the fiscal year '21 Q1 interest penalty. Guy, did you want to talk about that? That was something that I think you wanted to discuss.
Yeah, basically, it was just to, because it was such a short period of time, instead of August 15th to November 15th, it became September 29th to November 15th. And I think because of the virus and all the things that happened, because of, we weren't able to generate a tax bill because of the education rate wasn't set, the select board has the authority, given by the governor, a special amendment for the virus up until December 31st. The select board may waive if they deem necessary interest rates for that particular period. So I just thought in voting for the waiving, because most people are a little confused, and I just think it would be a little nice thing to do and get back to doing it like we normally do. Our next bill is due November 17th, and then after that, we get on board doing the interest rates like we always did. That's just a recommendation, but the select board will make the ultimate decision.
Sure. I mean, before we get into a formal motion on it, I'll just say that I think it's a good idea. I do, I agree with you that I think the timing of tax payments is a little...
Out of kilter.
Out of kilter for people right now. So I think it's, I think it's a reasonable thing to do, to extend people a little bit more leeway for that.
Yeah, a little slack just around the wing.
Gwen?
I agree, plus I think it'd be easier for accounting purposes, too.
Bruce?
I concur.
Okay. Shelby, how does that sound to you?
Yeah, I'm all in favor of waiving them for right now, just giving everything.
Okay. Okay, then I'd like to formally make a motion that we, just so it's on the record...
Okay, any interest for the first quarter?
Okay. So that we would, I'm sorry.
Waiver, waiver.
Motion is going to be that we suggest, that, I guess, do we, are we the ones who are ultimately deciding this, or are we recommending to the...
Or deciding.
The select board has the authority to waive.
All right. Okay, so the motion is that we would waive any interest penalties for the Q1, for the first quarter tax payment. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce. Any further discussion on it, anybody? Okay. All those in favor of waiving the interest penalty on the first quarter tax payment signify by saying "aye." Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? All right. Thank you for thinking of that and suggesting that, Guy, because that's a very good idea. Okay, flying right along to 6C to review the traffic ordinance. So this was something that Mark had, I think, brought up last time, and it dovetails into some of the other conversations we've had. And, you know, without Joseph here, we won't maybe get too super into a discussion of it, but Guy had pointed everybody to the website where the current traffic ordinance is, which lays out all of our speed settings, or the speed regulations that we've defined for various roads in town. So I think the idea was that we might want to just take a look at them again, refresh our memories for people who were familiar with them before, or inform for people who weren't, and consider whether there are any of the speed limits in any of the zones that we might want to go through a process of evaluating again. Because there are established speed limits, if we did, if we did have an interest in considering changing any of them, the first thing that we would likely do would be to have a traffic study done by the Wyndham Regional Commission, like we've done in the past when we've established ones. They would put a reader out there and gather data about what speed people are going, and then from there, we could determine whether we wanted to make, to propose changes to the ordinance or not. I'll kick off and say that I did go back and read through it, and the one area that I wonder if we should consider, because I've never really probably understood why it was different, is that first section of Hill Road from the corner up to, and the way it reads is, it's a maximum speed of 40 miles per hour from the intersection of Grass and Brook Road north on Hill Road to Riverside Cemetery, then a maximum speed of 30 miles per hour from Riverside Cemetery north to the intersection of Grass and Brook Road. I don't necessarily understand why we've ever, why we've ever had it be 40 for that section rather than the entire road being 30, but I'm sure there probably was a reason. So that's, that's an area that, depending on our discussion and what people think, I wonder if that's something we should take a look at. Gwen, thoughts on speed limits? And we'll, we'll confine ourselves for the purposes of this really just to talking about speed limits, less so about other aspects of the ordinance for now.
Well, I definitely think it should, regardless of what speed you think it should be, it should only be one sign for the road. It doesn't make sense to have two different signs 300 yards from each other. That's very confusing. I think it should be one speed, 35, for the whole road, so that they know that the speed limit is, this road is 35 miles an hour, especially when you get up the hill and going around corners.
Right, although just to clarify, it's 30 for the rest of it, not 35.
30 is better.
Okay. Bruce, what's your, or, so, sorry, Gwen, not to cut you off, but are there other, off the top of your head, are there other segments of road in the town that you think the speed limits might be worthy of consideration?
I don't know. Maybe sections of Grass and Brook Road might be that straightaway, with it being 40, they seem to be going 50 instead of 40. Maybe if the speed limit was a little bit lower, maybe they would keep them, no, because I guess people that are speeding are going to speed, so, never mind. No, there are none of those.
Bruce, what's your...
Okay, I'll back into your question. I kind of concur with Gwen somewhat, but I don't think Grass and Brook should be changed. As far as Hill Road goes, what did you say from Riverside Cemetery to where? What were you saying, Guy?
Well, it says that it's 40 from the intersection of Grass and Brook Road, which is the triangle, basically, north on Hill Road to Riverside Cemetery.
Then change to 30 Howard.
Then a 30 from Riverside Cemetery north to the intersection, the other intersection on Grass and Brook.
Over here.
Right.
It starts at 40 at the stop sign. Not a good thing. I think that should be lowered in, in as much as we got a lot of action there, Johnny Swing and the buses, drop to 30, then when you go up to the top of the crest of the hill, then change to, well, I don't know, because you're going to go from, you said 40 from there till you get to Howard, Riverside Cemetery.
That's not that big a distance.
No, it's not.
You left the same.
Well, that's what I'm getting into. So if you're going to do it that way, let me think about it for a second. Well, you got to start, you got that stretch from Cynthia's to Riverside Cemetery, so if you're going, it should be 30, pass Johnny Swings, up, up Johnny Swings. Then when you go up to the top of the hill and you go that way, I don't know if it's proven to keep it at 40. Maybe you should go, and where is it at Howard's? Is it 30 Howard's? I believe it is.
30. By the time you get to, yeah, by the time you get to Howard's, it's down to 30.
Well, I suppose we could raise it to 35 for a minute, because it's a straight run there. That's what I'm talking about.
By the time you get to Howard's, you've got people and horses trained, and you're heading up the hill to go on.
Yeah, what I was talking about is the section between Johnny Swing and Howard's, the straightaway. And you're not going to ask somebody to, you're not going to ask somebody to 30 miles an hour. Yeah, well, me, I stopped and apologized to Johnny Swing one day because I was going 45 or 47, I was like, "Sorry, Johnny, I wasn't paying attention." That's a runway down there. So to make that a 30 mile an hour zone, I don't think it's going to work for you.
Well, I don't think doing anything's going to change people's driving.
No, it won't, it won't. The signs may not change people's strategies, but if we could fix it to where we could place a trooper, a line, then...
Yeah, I mean, and, well, and I guess it does get back to the question, and I'm not, I mean, I'm bringing this up, I'm not necessarily saying that my, that there isn't a good reason why that section is 40 miles an hour. I just, I don't, I don't know why it is, other than it, you know, at least going back to 2010, if not before that, it's been this way, because I know this hasn't been changed. This section of the ordinance hasn't been changed, at least since 2010. I don't know how long the speeds have been set that way.
On Mark's speed limit zone, and for months, probably 50 miles an hour, so I would say that probably that's the same in the town of Brookline, unless we posted it.
Well, we, I mean, we, as part of our, as part of our ordinance, we also set, and we have signage this way, that says, it's 35 miles per hour unless posted otherwise. However, we all know that the consultation we've gotten from V-Trans and other people is that that is not actually an enforceable policy to have that way.
Because the state...
Which is why, part of the reason that we've gone about setting speed limits explicitly on some areas rather than just...
So then we should change that sign. You're talking about the sign, I believe you're talking about the sign just as you come over the bridge in town.
Right. Well, I think what we'd say is that just because it isn't necessarily enforceable ultimately doesn't mean it isn't a good idea to suggest to people that they should go somewhere that they might otherwise want to go.
So let's take another 30 seconds and talk about Hill Road again, and I'm totally in favor of, I don't want to see a 40 mile an hour speed sign in front of the house as you're going past the horse thing there before Johnny Swings. That's, to me, is not a good thing. 30, get up to the crest of the hill, if you want, increase it a little bit to 40, and then you drop your Howard's to 30, going to the end of Grass and Brook Road. That's a stretch there of probably a tenth of a mile. It's a reasonable distance. If the signs at the top of the crest, just pass the entrance to Cynthia and Al's backyard there, and then, then change it to 30, wait your Howard's.
Yeah, I guess I'd wonder whether, what that would do and whether it would really be worth making that kind of change. Shelby, what's your, sorry, what's your, well, A, what's your feeling about the specific instance we're talking about, and then, do you have thoughts or feelings about speed limits that we've set in other areas of the town?
Um, no, I guess, I've never really thought it made much sense that the speed limit changes on that straightaway, because I think it just encourages people when they make the turn onto Hill Road to go fast, only to have to slow down in front of Howard's, which I don't think most people do. I think they wait for the hill to slow them down, because they're already going 40, why would you slow down to 30 when you go past the farm? You know, so I think it makes sense for that whole stretch to be the same. And I'm not really, honestly, I'm really not aware of the speed limit in the rest of the town. I'm assuming I generally follow it, but I don't drive through town a lot, so I pretty much drive from Hill Road out to Route 30, so I'm just not familiar with any other weird spots.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say that there aren't really any other, I wouldn't, I would argue that there aren't any other unusual spots other than, I suppose, you know, Grass and Brook Road, the paved portions of Grass and Brook Road are 40 miles per hour, except for the school zone, where we drop it down to 30. Otherwise, you know, the unpaved sections of Grass and Brook Road are 35. The paved portion of Putney Mountain Road is 30. Ellen Ware is 25, and the unpaved portions of Putney Mountain Road are 25. But this is, the Hill Road, that section on Hill Road is, I think, kind of unique in comparison to anything else in town, not that we have that many roads or that many areas to begin with.
I think, I think we really need to continue this discussion once Joseph gets here, because he's kind of the one that brought it up to begin with, because of how they speed by his house.
Right, right, and he may, yeah, there may be, there may be other, I agree, there may be other concerns and things that he wants to consider with that. Okay, then I guess what I'd suggest is let's, let's put this back on the agenda for the next meeting to continue the discussion. The other thing is, I will also sketch out in advance of that, just to refresh my own memory and everyone else's on what the, what a process might look like if we did want to change that posted speed area and/or some other posted areas, because there is a process that we would have to go through prior to even making changes to the ordinance. And then if we did make changes to the ordinance, there's a whole posting and review period before anything would take effect. There's, there's a bit of a process, but...
We just did this...
We did it a couple, yeah, I mean, when Chris, Chris Webb did most of the work on this when we posted Ellen Ware and Putney Mountain Road, which we did, whatever, two years ago, I guess. I could look at the date that we adopted it, yeah, May of 2018 is when we ultimately adopted that. Okay, so we'll put that back on for next time, and we'll, we'll have more of a discussion about it with, with Joseph involved, hopefully, and then also sort of lay out whether we want to go further down the process. Mark, forgive me, one thing I didn't ask was, was that, were there, I mean, I know that you had brought this up last time, were there other areas of speed concern in the town that you particularly thought we might want to...
Well, the number one is the topic of tonight, being that...
Guy just dimmed the lights for dramatic effect.
The speed numbers by the intersection through by Johnny Swing to Mrs. Nowes, placements of the speed limit and the number of speed limit, so that, what I guess I'm getting down to is what Joseph brought up, being able to enforce the speed limit, whereas signs may not work for everybody, but if somebody were to receive a warning or a ticket from a, that, that would automatically make you want to slow down and make the time you want it. So, basically, if there's signs in certain areas we'd like to move, what's the process to moving them, you know, either forward, one of the ones I was thinking about is when you come from, off from Hill Road towards Grass and Brook Road, and should there be a sign to slow you up as you're coming over the hill to the school bus, to Johnny Swing's area? You know, it's, I mean, it's 30 miles an hour, some people like to pick up speed as a straightaway, should we maybe have a sign that says, "Slow down to 30" or something before they go?
Okay, so a little bit maybe to the thing Bruce was toying with, the idea of maybe keeping, keeping the 40 zone, but shifting the positioning of it to not, to start after Johnny's job or something like that, rather than from the beginning.
And I know that there's areas in town, like through here, that's a speed zone, certain parts down through below the school, I've heard through Joseph's area, other people say that it's, you know, a lot of people speak to there. And I, you know, 40s probably, I don't think speak to the town, but definitely 30 through by the school. In the summers, there's a lot of, the teachers are pushing kids, some of the kids along Grass and Brook Road. So I just, you know, get everybody's opinion and just, if we have all our signs, if we look at all of them, look at the numbers, the placements, then it's enforceable. And I think spending money there is going to be a long-term benefit, being able to enforce the speed limit.
All right, cool, thank you. All right, so we'll pick that back up next time. Okay, moving on to old business. We were going to discuss again the remote and in-person meeting structure, which I think, based on our last conversation, probably boils down mostly to just firming up the remote portion of that, because we have, we have rules that are in place for people coming into the town office, which govern any of us who are physically here attending Shelby, did you want to kick us back off on that discussion? And am I, is it a fair characterization to say that we, we think maybe...
Well, so I think that, so I, so are there, last time, because I wasn't at the last meeting, so that's my bad, but the one before that, Guy was going to look into how, you know, what, so what are the, where are our rules? Like, what, what, what do we reference when somebody has questions about what it looks like to visit the town office in person?
Those are guidelines that the governor has mandated, and he suggests that only essential workers meet, and the only essential workers at this point are people who, like the select board, which govern a town, are considered essential. are considered essential and they should meet, and even at their meetings, they should be held remotely if possible. That's the mandate that the government has, the governor has stated. And that's in effect until at least November 15th. Whether that changes or not, I don't know. But if you look on the website, there's a, every other day I update the coronavirus website, and it has anything that anybody from the state level wants to add or change or whatever it is. So that's where it might be. But the bottom line is that we're still in an emergency. The state is still in an emergency state. And until that changes, we have to just carry on the way we are with remote meetings as much as possible. As far as the office, I have appointments, people have to make appointments. I only allow two people in at a time, and we have a morning appointment and an afternoon appointment. That seems to be working out pretty well. Most of the title searches and the attorneys and so forth are aware of that because all the towns pretty much are in the same vein. So until that changes, and now with the latest spike in some case numbers, people are becoming even more aware, so they're being even more careful and they are calling first to make sure, in fact, that they can come into the town.
So basically, we don't have, we don't have a written policy. Our policy is just that we are just going to adhere to whatever the state policy is. So we don't have any above and beyond restrictions or, I mean, because the state guidance is always the minimum. We have to adhere to that, of course. So that's what I've been getting at, is do we have a written, have we written down anything saying where we're at with that? And it's okay if we're not, so we're not. So we're just, our, our policy is we're adhering to whatever the most recent state mandate is for any in-person.
That is correct.
So, okay.
That's correct, the state supersedes anything anyway.
Yeah, and we haven't gone to, and we haven't gone above and beyond that and created anything more restrictive. So no matter what, we default to the state guidance right now.
Right.
Cool, okay. So yeah, so we don't really need to, and that's where we're at, and that's what it is. I don't, yeah, no need to re, I don't actually think it hurts to have it written as we, as we see it, but then we do, obviously, then we're also responsible for updating it, so I'm fine leaving that out because we don't want to have to update it every two weeks when the guidance changes on the number of people we can have or whatever, based on coronavirus cases. Like, if our default is we're just going to adhere to whatever the most recent state guidance says, that's great. Um, so like, so I think that in that case, I just wanted to loop back to where we were at with that because I think he was looking into it last night, or just if we, how we, what it was. Um, so yeah, so for just remote meetings, I mean, I think what I'm kind of getting at with this whole remote meeting thing is that I'm sort of remote by myself. And everyone else is in person, and we keep repeating that we're supposed to be remote when at all possible, not just in person as a matter of convenience. And quite frankly, it feels like I'm remote, not because it's convenient, but because I'm trying to adhere to the guidance, and everyone else is in person because it's more convenient. And it's easier.
I would say that's, that's not a fair characterization for some of us. Um, but, but I.
So when everyone else is in the room but me, and well, Joseph's not even here remotely tonight, I mean, can you see how it might seem when you're the person who's not there with the benefit of being in person?
That's a good choice.
Why is Bruce there? Why is Scott there? Why is Mark there?
Well, I would, I would suggest that some people are here because the challenge of the technology and of communicating effectively via the technology.
Sucks.
Has become very detrimental to our meetings.
Good way to put it.
The other thing I will say, and I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean, I'll be perfectly honest. I would prefer to be able to do these remotely. But for one thing, the existence of these meetings and the manager, management of these meetings at the moment relies on me and my laptop and my subscription to Zoom. So I'm here because I don't know how we would have this meeting effectively if I wasn't. As well as the fact that I'm one of the people, prior to Bruce being here, who can sign these pay orders without everybody else having to come in here to sign the pay orders. So I'll argue that I think there are, unfortunately, some logistical reasons that it has become easier for me to be here, but I prefer not to be. The other thing I'll say is that, as we've mentioned before, if it, if it is becoming or has become detrimental to the quality of the meeting or people's representation of the town in this meeting, to be remote for this, then we should set up this room so that everybody can physically be here because we can do that within state guidelines.
We did it last night. Yeah, how many people in here, 12?
Well, that was.
Well, let's, let's, I don't want to get off on a tangent on that because, I mean, and Shelby, I'm not, I don't mean any of this to, to just make it sound like I'm disregarding your concerns and the effect that being one or one of a couple of people who are remote not being able to see a lot of things that we're looking at and everything else. I know that that's, that's, that's not a good situation.
Well, it's not being able to have an organic conversation. It's definitely, in the beginning, when they're more or less remote, I know it might have been harder for some of those individuals to be remote, maybe than me because I'm a little bit more technology savvy. But now that it's trickled down to less and less remote, the natural, more organic quality of a meeting is really good. But with me not in on that. So I mean, I think then in that case, I'm definitely comfortable with where the COVID numbers are and with the precautions everyone's taking. If I come and we space it out, we're doing the things we say we're doing, I'd be happy to start coming in person again because, and like I said, I tried to lead off with, I just, if you can understand how it might feel like when I'm essentially the only remote person on the phone. You're like, so I'm speaking from my perspective. I'm not saying like, like, so I don't mean it to sound like, well, everyone's in person but me, but you know, but that's literally how it feels and I'm the only one that doesn't, like, I still have to mute and unmute and everyone else can kind of just jump in and have a conversation. Um, and it is very different, and I know you all know that because we've all done at least one meeting where you're not, where we're not all together. So I know you all have had some experience with what it's like to be the person on the other end of the line with the technology and the freezing screen. So if we're going to take the precautions, and that's something we're all comfortable with, I'm, I'm happy to resume in person and only do remote when a situation arises where it's, it's safer or makes sense because of god knows what, exposure, whatever happens.
Right, and that might change, right. Or all of our approach to this might change over time, depending on what happens, right. So let me just, before I speak for everyone, I mean, I'll say that I'm, I'm comfortable with our ability to be able to set that up so that it can be done safely and to everybody's comfort. Gwen, are you comfortable with us expanding to two more people? In this, there's plenty of room. Bruce, do you have any concerns about that?
Yes, no, no concerns, I agree. But also, I think in regards to what you were saying up top about you being more comfortable being at home doing this, given that you're the chair as well, I think in person is a lot more user-friendly. Especially, especially with respect to town, if somebody wants to come here. That we, we're following the state's guidelines, we're following the governor's guidelines. There's a reason why we're the number one in the country is because his guidelines work.
Right, what I'll, but to clarify something, though, is that we're still in the situation, though I know we've had, I've had confusion about it in the past, but to make very clear, we are still in the circumstance where no member of the public is going to come to this meeting. They're going to come remotely, they're going to attend remotely, which is fine, which is good. The thing that I'll say that Shelby, that would also be beneficial to you and/or Joseph attending physically in person is that, I think the big, one of the challenges that we have with people potentially wearing masks or face coverings while we're physically in this space is that we're trying to communicate with people who are only hearing us through the not particularly fantastic microphone on my laptop. So quite frankly, the more of us, if all of us were in the same room, we, in a worst-case scenario, we all could be wearing masks and communicating more effectively than we're going to be able to do if some of us are online and some of us are in the meeting. You know what I mean?
Yes.
So I, I don't think it's a bad idea as long as we are comfortable and take.
If, if Joseph were here, we can work that out.
Yeah. Guy, you have any concerns about this?
No, no, in fact, originally what happened is that when you went to the remote meetings, it was an option that was given to all the select board members, whether you wanted to meet here and practice social distancing or in fact meet remotely. The fact is that we've always been able to hold five people here and six or seven with Mark and Archie possibly being here and still satisfy the state guidelines of social distancing and wearing face coverings. So I don't see that as an issue at all. So yeah, we can do that, it's, you know, it's entirely up to the select board what they'd like to do.
Okay, then, and I mean, I guess just to clarify for Peter's benefit, and I know we've discussed this before. Peter, I certainly don't lump you into any of this. I don't expect during this situation for you to change anything about what you're doing. You would still attend remotely.
Thank you. I do have something to add if you want to call me at some point.
Yes, please, please, give us your view.
One of the things I'm doing these days is reporting for the Deerfield Valley News. So my assignment this week included attending the governor's news briefing, at which Dr. Levine and Dr. Kelso discussed the recent outbreak at a sports event, which led to, it's a guy named Picek who's in the regulation department, who is really good with numbers. And he was really off, let's see, I was going to read it to you, but I won't. Just the, the map of the spread from one event that ended up with like 89 cases. And Dr. Kelso spoke about how adhering to the protocols and not going out unless you really have to. And people in vulnerable populations, like there's people my age, really makes a difference, and it is the only tools that we have now to control the spread.
Yes.
And it is spiking. There is only one county on the other side of Amat's borders that's not red, there's one that's yellow.
That's what I was talking about before.
You know, just going to Pennsylvania required to quarantine when I get back.
Yeah, right.
So what they're saying is that, what the governor started out with is we need to watch out for pandemic fatigue. Like, since we're successful at keeping it down, we start to relax, and back it comes.
Yes.
And they're saying it is really serious, it's rising right now. And Dr. Levine had been speaking with his counterparts in the other states, all the way down to West Virginia. And the medical people from those states are all anticipating rather draconian measures in the near future if this thing keeps rising. And it is going up.
Yeah.
So I'm saying all this this way because.
You're saying for.
You know, I think it's, I think if you do really stay six feet away and stuff, that's good. But the schools are all upgrading the HVAC systems. And they're all putting in extra air cleaners. I would suggest that you get a HEPA filter room air cleaner because that will capture any of the particles. You know, they have smaller holes than a virus. So the idea is that the air goes through the air cleaner, the virus stays in the filter.
Right.
That's not the idea.
So I just urge you to really take this seriously if you're going to be in person.
Hey, look.
Be, be real Nazis about it. Thanks.
Cool, cool, thank you for that, yeah, thank you for all that information and that feedback. Okay, so Shelby, then, are you?
Yeah, I'm good, I would just say, and we can, and there's no rush to take a look at it necessarily right now, but I do think that you did bring up the point of how some of the bigger, the reasons people may need to be in person is because of that barrier to, that technology barrier. Um, so I think an important part of us having some, or the important thing of having some semi-written policy about, you know, this meeting format, to be, for, there to be a way for the public to contact us if they felt they needed to be at a meeting but had a technology barrier. And part of that, I think, is determining what our capacity is with the six feet in mind. And I'm happy to come early to that next meeting and just kind of measure it out and get an idea of what we think our maximum capacity is. So there's somebody who's like, I really need the in-person, you know, to speak to the board. We know whether or not we could accept them in person. I mean, you know, they have a right to be at the meeting even if they have a technology barrier, just like a select board member does.
Right, although, although I would argue that, no, I would argue that we can, we could work through, I mean, literally, people could call, we could call people, we, there.
Okay, so you don't think we need a provision for like somebody saying, I really want to come, you know, present to the board this issue I'm having, because I mean, I'm happy to.
I don't at the moment, I mean, I guess I could be proven wrong at some point, but, you know, we have had the handful of times over the last couple of months that we have had members of the public unannounced at meetings. They have attended through the Zoom meeting or called in. Now granted, there could be people who wanted to come who physically couldn't figure out how to do it, although I, they also didn't reach out to anyone in our organization to try to get help with that, and I certainly would have helped anyone. So I don't think that's a concern that we need to worry ourselves about at the moment, anyway.
Okay, well, so then I guess we probably don't need the policy at all.
I don't think so.
All right, so let's, let's set it to the side for now, and like you say, and like we, you know, situations may change, though, and we may, we may be back to needing to do more, give it more thought at any point in time. Uh, Bruce, you have something you want to?
Peter, could you clarify for me, what would you call that, a HEPA room conditioner?
Oh, a HEPA filter. You can get these things at all the hardware stores.
No, that's just a filter.
Well, it's essentially an air purifier.
Yeah, an air purifier.
It's like, it's a, it's like.
It's like a comb?
It's like a round fan that's in the little floor.
Exactly, it's like a fan, you've seen it.
Yeah.
Like a Dean and Miller fire type thing?
Sorry, what, sorry, Peter, finish your thought, sorry, we were talking.
Well, it looks like a little, you know, hazard or something, sits on the floor and you plug it in.
Yeah.
It's got a fan in it. You know, I think you have to be careful changing the filters in this case.
Right.
Yeah.
Good point. Unless you want everything concentrated, it's a much, it's a much more effective way to contract.
If you, if you ask Scotty, he'll probably be able to tell you all about this.
Who? Scotty.
That's about it.
Because they.
Because all the schools have had their.
I can maybe go see him anyway, because he invited someone there, I was going to send it there one day.
Get some of these with their consent.
Okay, I'll go see him.
Yeah, that's a good idea, thank you for that.
And there also may be grants at federal and state levels to purchase such things. Another area for the school system.
I'm going to go see him.
Under the CARES Act, there's a great deal of money.
For us? No.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, from, still, yeah, there's, there's.
For 10?
I can send you my news report if you like.
Go ahead, no, you're talking about the last conference? I saw.
We're talking about, I think it was October.
That's all right, I'm going to go see Scotty to bash it anyway.
Yeah, Bruce, I'm scared of it.
There he is.
October 30th. Uh, okay, all right, moving along down to 7B. We were going to have a little bit of a discussion about the treasurer position. So just to, just to bring everybody up to speed in a general way, it's, I, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn to say it's entirely possible that by town meeting, we will not necessarily have the same treasurer running for reelection. we will not necessarily have the same treasurer running for reelection. So, it's, it's brought up the question of, of what, what should and what is the Select Board's involvement or responsibility or purview as far as the town treasurer position is concerned? Obviously, the town treasurer is elected by the town and has certain responsibilities and certain tasks that the treasurer takes on. It's been suggested in some conversations that, you know, the Select Board, the Select Board does have the ability, if we wanted to, to hire a bookkeeper to double-check the work that is going on by the treasurer or take over some of the work that is done by the treasurer, if that is something that the Select Board wanted to do. But I think some of us, and I'll say myself, have real concerns about overstepping the bounds of what the Select Board should be doing and respecting the position of the town treasurer that the townspeople have elected.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, I wanted to, before you do though, let me just read a couple of things. Guy was kind enough to pull a bunch of information together off VLCT and some other sources that sort of aggregate things about these various positions from the Vermont statutes. And a couple of highlights that I would make from some of their descriptions about the treasurer is, you know, you know, statutorily, whether or not the treasurer is appointed as someone to collect the taxes. And that is something that we vote on at town meeting. And to the best of my knowledge, we always have the treasurer do that. But I guess technically, it wouldn't always have to be the case. Regardless of whether they collect the taxes or not, when bills are prepared, the treasurer is the one who is supposed to credit the general, highway, other funds, debit funds when taxes are received. So, essentially, keep the books for the town. And also, keep accounts of money, bonds, notes, evidences of debt paid or delivered to the treasurer and all monies paid out. The treasurer pays all of the pay orders, though the Select Board has the responsibility for technically drawing them up and approving them as we do in our process. And that's, that's generally the, the statutorily defined role of the treasurer. I will say for my own purposes, and then we can go around and have a little bit of a discussion about it. At this point, I see no reason to delve into changing any of that responsibility. I know that at the moment, we have a situation where our treasurer maybe needs a little more assistance on some of the overarching accounting aspects. We're fortunate enough to have a former treasurer in Samara, who's been willing to step in and help that person. That's not a long-term solution. But I still like to believe that the long-term solution is finding a person in town who wants to have these responsibilities and carry out those responsibilities. Perhaps supplemented by assistant treasurers like we currently have or other assistant treasurers in the future who might have other skills that make them all be able to satisfy the job requirements. It's kind of a long way around saying, and we'll kick off. Gwen, do you feel like we need to go down the road of changing or looking into changing responsibilities or delving into responsibilities for that position?
Well, until Sarah, until Sarah, or till the treasurer actually resigns, I don't think we need to, like you said, step in until that's really necessary. If it gets to the point where she literally says, I can't do this anymore, then the Select Board, if my understanding is correct, the Select Board has that option of appointing somebody to finish out the year until she's, until they elect a new treasurer in March. That gives us a chance to maybe recruit and see if we can find somebody that is willing to take that responsibility. Because we want somebody to do the position that is familiar with bookkeeping purposes.
Right.
It'd be kind of like asking me to be the account, the treasurer. I have no clue how to do bookkeeping. No, thank you.
Well, let's, let's just go around to the board first and then we're going to go get Bruce.
Well, that's a point. But I pretty much concur with everything that you said. Don't think we should change the structure of the treasurer. I think we should be proactive, I guess that's the best way to put it, and see if we can find somebody in town that would, that we can rely on, that we can do the position. I don't think it's a good idea to wait until we have to, for two reasons.
That's what I said.
I thought that's what you...
No.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Okay. But anyway, we get to the first week in March, and we don't have somebody to replace Sarah. Then we know what happens. It goes out to the floor. And I'd much prefer, look, I got this position in a default setting. Okay? A lot of these positions in town is because nobody wants to do it. Okay? And in light of, and my position is in halfway as important as that treasurer's position. She governs the money or heat. And I'm thinking that we should try to be proactive from minute one and try to put a feeler out like we talked about last time, whether it be through Julie or some other ideas the Select Board has, to try looking for some, even if we have to go out of town. Because if we don't find somebody in town, and we get to March, whatever date it is, town meeting, and we put it to the floor, then we're at the mercy of the floor.
Right. A thing to clarify though is that the town treasurer in our town is, as an elected position, has to be a resident of the town.
Okay, sorry.
Assistant treasurers, the treasurer...
I bet you we're daunting.
The treasurer themselves has the ability to hire assistant treasurers. The assistant treasurers do not have to be town residents. The town, as the Select Board, we also do technically have the ability to hire a bookkeeper who would not have to be a town resident. But as far as the formal town treasurer position, the way our town currently handles it, that has to be a resident.
Well, it's not a bad...
But it has to be voted in.
Correct, what I'm saying, like I said...
Right, but even someone we would appoint in a, in a certain circumstance would still have to be a town voter.
Resident. But that's what I was going, driving at with the default position. So, if we have somebody in line, it's our recommendation that this person's already started to work with the treasurer. What do you all think? And if somebody's out there on the floor that can do a better job, Rucker or somebody that's really talented in those books or whatever, and wants a position, we're in a difference, we're in a, we're in a millionaire position. We get to pick somebody that, that would be very good for the town. But I think it'd be a really good idea, which was what I was thinking last time, is to be proactive starting from minute one, to try looking around and not wait until February 27th.
Okay. Shelby, I know you're just kind of getting caught up on this and you haven't been part of some of the prior discussions of this. But what are, what are your thoughts based on what you heard, I guess?
I think, yeah, I think, well, I guess I'm worth a question. So, we have a pretty strong indication that we will need to have somebody else running in a, per a town treasurer slot come March.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I think it's in, yeah, I think it's important if, if there's anyone, if it's possible to identify people in town in advance and kind of recruit them and encourage them to show up. Because I think that's half the battle with electing someone on Town Meeting Day, is having them present and being willing to stand up for the position. It's great if there's people who we think might be great for it, but if they don't, if they're not there on the day to say that they're, you know, willing to be nominated and to, then, then it doesn't matter how great they are or if they have, if there's potential. If we don't kind of reach out and I think, make sure people know that they would be appreciated there and get them to come. But I, do we typically have a great tracker? And we had Samara for a long time, right?
Yeah, we had Samara for a long time and we had Penny prior to that. Yeah, I mean, well, what I'll say is, you know, we, we've, you know, we have historically, I guess just in recent history, you know, Sarah was the assistant treasurer for a while and, which was why she thought she was interested and was willing to be the treasurer. I think to a point that other people have made, and I think Guy has made this point before, and I'll come to you in a second, Guy. I know you have some thoughts on this. You know, I think it will be important when we get to the point of communicating and reaching out to whoever it may be, however we go about doing that and whenever we go about doing that, to really make sure that people understand. Because I don't know that that is, quite frankly, I'm not sure that we, that the, that Sarah adequately understood what she was getting into. And I think it's important that we not set somebody else up to be in the same kind of circumstance where they don't know quite what they're getting into. And that may be having more of a, more time for them to discuss with Samara and Sarah about what's involved in the role, what software is involved, what technological needs there are, things like that. So that we don't end up in the same situation a year from now. Guy, you as, as both town clerk and one of the assistant treasurers, what's, what's your thoughts on this whole subject?
My thought is that, as I said before, I don't think the Select Board has a pony in this race because the treasurer is an elected person and has to be elected at town meeting. But prior to that, if, if Sarah decides to stay on with Samara, we have four months where we can maybe possibly look for someone to replace her in March. The only thing you have to be careful is that you have to advertise this because it's the law. And that's good because you can have four or five people come in, you can interview them, you can see what their capabilities are and explain to them the responsibilities so that when town meeting does come up, someone nominates Mrs. Jones to be the treasurer, the town now has the opportunity to question her, see what her abilities are and vote yea or nay. In the event that you don't get someone elected, which is possible, then the town, the Select Board has the right to appoint someone. And again, you can go out of the spectrum of being in town. You can go out of town to appoint someone. And maybe, you know, the way things are going right now, you may...
I don't, I don't necessarily think that's strictly true. I don't know that, because I think we've had this discussion before, actually, when we had to appoint the treasurer previously. I know that we appointed positions, positions that are defined as, this is something we should, they contact VLCT and...
Exactly, yeah.
But appointed positions, positions that are defined as appointed positions do not have to be a resident, a voter of the town. But I believe even if we are to appoint someone to fill the term of an elected position, I believe that person has to be a voter of the town.
I'll be honest with you, it's pure speculation on my point, this, at my part at this point, so...
If you kind of let us just go, I mean, not that we're at that point and hopefully we don't get to that point.
But I'm just saying so that we can get to someone that possibly has the experience, the capabilities, and at town meeting, you can say, you can question them, vet them, and say, okay, do you feel, and then the, the body will say yea or nay. And then if they don't have one, then you can, the Select Board has the ability to do what they want to do. And that happens, unfortunately, it's happening more often than not. Because a lot of people, first of all, we're a small town. To hire someone just for eight hours a week is difficult with no benefits, no anything else. So, and that's, that's the issue. So, going forward, I think we just have to look for someone. And then if we advertise, and who knows? There may be someone out there just who needs a couple of hours a week to bring them over. I think it would be a good idea.
Yeah. I think, if I could say, we should continue the process. If you want to put on, you don't want it on the agenda for budget time or anything like that. But we should continue this discussion so it doesn't make it to the back burner. Now, we should keep pushing forward with it. So, I just don't want to get to February 27th, like I said before, and not have had done the late work in order to prepare for the change.
Right, and I totally agree. I mean, I guess the one last thing I would say is, while I'm, while I agree we don't want to get to town meeting and have no idea if anybody wants to be treasurer because that is going to impact us and the town in a very negative way. So, it's not the situation that we want the town to be in or ourselves as board members to be in. At the same time, I'm not exactly sure I grasp how we would go about the advertising portion of the, I mean, the reality is, we have an elected town treasurer right now. That town treasurer has the ability, and only that town treasurer has the ability to advertise and hire assistant treasurers. We do not have the ability to hire assistant treasurers. So, at the moment, and I believe that this is, that Samara and Sarah have...
Are working on it.
Are working on this process of hopefully identifying someone potentially to be hired as an assistant treasurer with an eye towards that person taking over. And I think that's, that's the ideal way for this to all play out and hopefully it will play out that way. But to Bruce's point, we should keep tabs on it and make sure we don't end up in a situation where we get to the end of February.
Dave, why don't we go back on the agenda a month from now and see how it's going?
That's a good idea.
And, and if, and if Samara, and if Samara and Sarah all have a, some kind of input at this point, maybe we should interject through that and be in. Because now we're down to three months ahead of that. And I know I covered very much.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good idea.
Before the holidays, we'll be, probably still a little thick on the budget thing, but it's not, it'll take not much time to just discuss it really quickly, get them involved, see what they're doing. If they're not doing it, in the meantime, if I want to check VLCT on the, on the legalities, we'll know what we can do and what we can't do. That's a month, so...
Okay, that's a good idea. Let's, let's do that. Okay, any last thoughts from anybody on that before we move on?
Um, no, but I was just, I guess, it, we're within boundary. Like, it's, it's okay if I connect with somebody on the board individually because it's only two people and not a four.
Yep.
To kind of get caught up on what happened in the executive session?
Yep.
Okay, cool. So, I'll reach out, but just to make sure I'm not missing any additional puzzle pieces.
Sure, okay.
Other than that, I'm good on that conversation.
Okay, cool. Okay, moving on to the item we added, which is 7C building update.
I believe you can...
Mr. Melo.
Okay.
Let's try it quick if we can.
I can do it real quick.
Thank you.
I can do it in two minutes.
Because Gwen's about to fall asleep, that's why I was...
Gwen? Because you don't have any chocolate here. If you had chocolate here...
Yes, I do, it's in my pocket.
Come on, Bruce, you're working on your two minutes.
All right, yeah, exactly. That's coming out of your time. I know you're eating ice, but...
Money hasn't changed since, as far as I know, I haven't checked the pay orders. Fifteen thousand, five hundred and one dollars and eighty-six cents in the budget as of 11/1. Jeffords came last week and came back twice, three times, some trouble issues. Everything seems to be taken care of. I've got a very personal one-on-one basis with Tim Jeffords to make sure that anything, they are swamped. They, they invented it. It's so bad, I don't need to get into it. It's so bad, I don't need to get into it.
But things are in a good place with Jeffords, because the, I know with some of the emails, it was...
That was before I really got into the...
But they've gotten, okay, they're getting back to you and stuff.
Yes, we worked it out, there was some water hammering, I had discussed that with Tim Jeffords for 20 minutes. We both kind of agreed it was probably a plumbing issue, then Joey Jeffords came back and... Olivia seems to be happy at this point, but waking up the kids with water hammering wasn't working very well. Okay. I'm also in the process of what I call dump your electric to get them to come up, and send the vendor, vendor papers that they need to fill out. And again, next week, it looks like Mark and I are going to do some work next week to finish up this cycle's maintenance. On the 14th, we should be done, the things, I don't need to repeat them all, because you've heard them all before. Other than I'm probably going to ask Dave to come over one more time and fix one window that I'm not happy with that the cord broke, and he can fix that. A part of that meeting that Mark and I look like we're pointing towards doing is to go to the Round School House and straighten that scene out. That should take an hour, it's just not that hard. And then we're going to come over here and bring my cat and mitigate the mice, just kidding, Gwen. But we're going to come over here and see what we can do about some, helping you...
We've got seven.
You've got seven of them? Holy shit, it's an open door policy in here. So, we're going to try and see what we can do about that. So, that's it.
Have you winterized the church?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Chris, you have a question? I did, I did reach out to Scott Monday morning, he called me back Monday afternoon, said he did it last week.
Good, because I know Leanne was concerned.
Yeah, okay, I was going to ask, so, right, so Leanne knows about it too, okay, cool.
Okay, I think, I don't know, I don't know if they've put the heat in that place yet. I checked a week ago when I was there, and there was no heat in there. I don't, I don't know if I put it inside, I guess.
Did anybody notify Leanne that it's been taken care of?
Pardon?
Did anybody notify Leanne that the church has been taken care of?
Not yet. I can email her, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, just follow up so she knows it's been done.
I did, at one point, look up in the attic again, we're getting some poops, but it's not very bad. Kind of holding, in a remote way, Kerry Born to the fire that he promised that he would keep an eye on it.
Oh, for the bad.
For the bad, but we seem to be okay. I watched it the whole summer intermittently, and we don't seem to be having any issue. And I think Kerry Born is the one who straightened, to shout out to him, that he straightened it out, because they did the same thing in my house, which I was having bad issues and killing like four of them, I think. And I discovered that getting rid of that big pine tree that's outside of my house and suffering on my house, they had no place to go, so they weren't bothering me anymore. And what he did was pretty much the same thing, he cleared around the church, and we don't seem to have that issue anymore.
Okay.
Around schoolhouse, something else about the round schoolhouse. Maybe I'll think of it, but, no, I guess that's it.
Okay, cool, thank you. Moving on to summary updates, Mr. Tanza, let's...
The election was a great success, we had 335 voters, which equates to 75, 76% turnout. And we had 80% of the voters were absentee, so that was a good thing. We got out of here about a quarter to 12 last night, but everything worked out good. We have five justices of the peace that have been elected, four of them are brand new, so everything's looking good, the results are on our website, or the links to the results are on the website. And it's still pretty busy, we have appointments for the next two weeks for title searches and attorneys, because there seems to be a lot of refi-ing and some sales that are still going on in Brookline.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Very fast question. Are you happy with the way Jim Condos has been handling the elections?
You know, it's a bittersweet thing, the bottom line is that Jim Condos had three months or four months to put together something that no one ever anticipated. We didn't know about this virus, we didn't do it. So, the bottom line is that, to assure safety for everybody, which is the concern, that's the paramount concern, that during a crisis that everybody could vote and vote safely, he and his team put together the absentee ballot. Has it got a few parts? Yes, it's not perfect, but for the most part, 99% of it worked fine. It was a lot of work for all the clerks in the state and all the people involved in the elections, but it came off pretty well, and I'm pleased with it. I wasn't a big fan of it, but now as I see it working out, and I think a few more tweaks, I think it would be a fine way to...
Let's increase the vote, don't you think?
I thought...
Pardon me? Don't you think you increase the voting?
No, the funny thing is that in the 2016 presidential election, we had a 76% turnout in Brookline. We did the same percentage turnout.
Yeah?
Yeah, even though we have more voters, but more people voted, so it's still about 76%. But the bottom line is that a lot of people have voted, and it turned out very well. And until we get used to it, like anything else, anything new is a little awkward, but I think going forward, I think it might be a way to go.
And I think that, and I, because I used the site when we got ballots and stuff in, and when people requested it, the site they have out there was, I thought, very well done.
V E M S.
It was fairly easy to do, once I showed the steps, it was excellent, as far as I'm concerned.
And the folks also can sign up online, they can get all that information online on the MyVoter page. It's real simple, it's user-friendly, so I think it's a way to go.
Thanks, Guy.
Yep.
Mr. Bills, what's going on with you?
Well, since our last meeting, we established a new assault vendor, and I made the call, and we received our first load of winter salt.
Excellent.
Since the last time of our last meeting, we still had the rented excavator on wheels, which I took the time to install another pair of culverts on Parker Road into a new location that will help relieve some erosion that was taking place toward the beginning of the road. Also, did a lot of ditch work to correct water erosion. I used the machine to dig and install new posts for new signage. One area that I put new signs was the Putney Mountain Road intersection. And dug some stumps and removed them. And at that point, that was the end of our rental. So, the list, still have an ongoing list of things that could be done in the spring if we rent the machine again. Just this week, with the wind and the heavy rain, we had a tree went over Putney Mountain Road, and there's a root ball that came out of the ground, came off the steep bank, and so the machine would be very handy to go up there. But it's going to have to wait, the road is very passable, and we're also into the no maintenance part of our winter months for Putney Mountain Road. I continue to check it, just to make sure that it's passable. I still have, in my next week here, I've gotten some mulch to put down on some of the areas that I excavated and some seed. I also have some more signs to install. I also talked to Porrier Line Strike, which in our last meeting, we talked about awarding Porrier Line Strike Company to do our yellow lines. And he asked me to prep the new pavement, put a center dot to shoot for and on your truck to apply the lines, and he asked if I would wait until he calls me. So, I'm waiting for the phone call. He was finishing up his seizing, and he will call me and let me know a couple days in advance, so I can work with him on making sure the roads are dry and prepped and ready.
The weather should be cooperating for a little bit. Hopefully, gas and openings soon, then I can...
We have a green window, and I know his business is half in Maine, half in Vermont, and he's in Maine at this point.
Is he, okay.
But I expect to hear from him that any time, I received a call last night, and I don't have his number on me, but I think it may have been him calling, so I will check that after the meeting. And I guess that's it, that's it for today.
Awesome, that's great, thanks, Mark. I have a question, I have a couple of questions that I'll talk to you about afterwards on one of these Wyndham Regional Commission grant things that I'm trying to figure out, what I haven't done. Because I think there's a number of things I probably haven't done on it. Okay, moving on to communications. Email-wise, one thing I guess of note is, I just got an email, or I got CC'd on an email today, from Chris Hunt at V Trans, who's the project supervisor, V Trans Project Supervisor for Salt Sancho Project. And that has, that project has cleared the environmental review.
Yeah.
So, he's now asking Ron Bell and Margot to prepare various additional things. And some of it, at a certain point, may, I think, is going to involve review by our attorney. I think there's possibly something that's going to involve our attorney looking at something, which I guess we'll have a discussion at that point about who we want to use for that. Once I know what it is.
Well, that's what you have to do.
At the moment, I don't know, but... And it may not, he, this is sort of standard stuff, it's sort of template stuff. It may not turn out that it's actually necessary in our specific instance, I'm not sure yet. I just got the email, and it's not really addressed to me, so we'll see. So, that's the email, so that's good that that cleared the environmental stuff, so there's...
That was a big one.
That gets to move on to fairly quickly being, moving towards construction, hopefully.
So, it's great, it's looking good, huh?
Yeah, so that's all, that's all good. And then physical mail, we got a number of appropriation requests, which we won't go through now, but we'll go through once we have our special meeting to talk through budget stuff. We got appropriation requests from Warfree Library, from SE, the Southeastern Vermont Watershed Alliance, from SEFC, and from Grace Cottage. And all that, those will all be added to the appropriations that we'll review when we get to that point. Then separately, we received a letter from the Wyndham County Sheriff's Office informing us of their policing service rates for the upcoming fiscal year, which are predicated on, there's a certain rate, it's $41 an hour if you contract for 2,000 hours or more. Less than 2,000 hours, which is probably more, what most anybody would be doing is $52 an hour, which is, I think, pretty similar to what their situation has been in the past. Which the fact that they're soliciting interest in that is positive in comparison to past years, where I don't think they've never really wanted anybody.
That looks similar in price to when we were doing it back, I just did a quick number here, of $30,000 or something like that, is that right?
Yeah, I don't think that the hourly, generally the hourly rate for the sheriff and the state police, I don't think those have changed much, if they've changed at all in recent years. And I think, you know, the challenge, like it was when we contracted with state police or previously when we contracted with sheriff, because the problem is actually having them have the manpower to actually follow through any duty hours. Then we also got another letter from SEFC, which is just a thank you for the distribution of our previous appropriation. And then we got a letter from Grace Cottage, which is also another letter of appreciation for the previous appropriation. And each of these, as I mentioned, had sent in separately their new appropriation request. And then we have a very nice Northern Lights sort of cover of the latest VLCT news. And that's it for the physical now. Moving on to pay orders. First up is the payroll warrant, which I've already signed previously. We'll do our usual thing, go around. Gwen, do you have any questions on the payroll warrant?
No.
Bruce, any questions on the payroll?
Why, sorry, Sarah came out with it.
Shelby, any questions on the payroll warrant?
No.
Okay, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll warrant 2020-69 dated October 28th, 2020, excuse me, in the amount of $1,416.71. Is there a second? Seconded by Bruce, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrants 2020-69 dated October 28th, 2020, in the amount of $1,416.71, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? The payroll warrant is approved. Then we have the accounts payable warrant. Gwen, do you have any questions on the accounts payable warrant?
Yeah.
Bruce, any questions on the accounts payable warrant? All right. Shelby, did you have any questions on the accounts payable?
Um, no, just, um... So, hold on. No, I don't know that, I'm sorry, I can't even find it.
I thought she...
Yeah, I didn't get it either.
You know what, now, I'm looking now to see if, I don't think that that was actually sent.
You see the payroll line?
Yeah, no, now I'm looking for it, so I don't, I don't think she actually sent out a digital copy of it. Hang on a second, Shelby, I'll, I'll take pictures of this summary sheet and email it to you.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably mine, it's just out of it, so...
Yeah, no, and it's, I, I made the assumption that it had been sent, like...
I thought I looked at it.
Yeah, I did look in advance, I was just looking, I found the payroll line, I didn't even think, and then I was like, oh, I searched AP, and I was like, I don't have it.
Yeah, no, it didn't get sent.
We're 734 aggressive, bro. Okay, so this service call for...
Bruce, let me do this, while you're doing that, can I just, so I can send this to Shelby, so that she has a chance to look at this. This lighting is going to be...
Not easy.
Yeah, because it gives a shadow.
Make a beat it to it.
Want me to bolt it up?
Is she on telephone?
Yeah.
Oh. Because I could move my camera into it.
Okay, Shelby, I'll just email it, they're not the greatest pictures, but I think you'll be able to at least, you'll be able to at least read the summary sheets, and then we can look.
We can look stuff up, yes. So, all the code three stuff was done for here?
This is going to be gripping television.
No, it's for all the buildings.
Okay.
Code three did the school.
You have to split down from the school. How does that split down in terms of cost for the school?
It should be right in, there should be invoices for everything there. And the check is for the, all the invoices.
$235. Yes, I broke it down, God, what was it? Brooklyn High Town Office?
I thought you had that conversation with them.
There we go, that company, Suzie's Little Peanuts. $235?
Yeah.
All right, Shelby, those are coming through.
Well, some of the inspections are state mandated and the stick...
Of course, everything's state mandated.
Yeah.
So is my toilet paper.
Yeah.
Don't get into that, okay. I'm just got done. Almost done. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what it is.
I can't wait to see Jeffords build. One hour last year, just to do a little bit of work on my house after they did that.
$100 an hour.
So, Shelby, the second page is actually after they, after Samara ran it, she then realized there were a few additional charges that she had included. So, that's why it's a little, there's not an actual... So that, so that's why it's a little, there's not an actual total on the second page, but it's.
And I'll look at that one now, and I'll be good.
Hey, Guy, at least they didn't submit a bill to the town director like they did last time.
And I can look up.
I haven't got to do that. They didn't do it to them, they did it to them. They put it with you and sent it to you.
Okay, so any, so no further questions on that, Bruce, you're good with.
All good, thank you.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable warrant 2020-72, dated November 4th, 2020, in the amount of $3,303.69. Is there a second?
No, second.
Seconded by Gwen, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant 2020-72, dated November 4th, 2020, in the amount of $3,303.69. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, then the accounts payable warrant is also approved. Agenda for next time, like we said, we'll, we'll talk about the traffic ordinance again, or continue the discussion of traffic ordinance. We'll, we'll discuss when we want to have our budget meeting.
Okay.
We'll do the usual stuff. Any other agenda items you can think of at the moment, Gwen?
No.
Excuse me, Bruce, any agenda items?
Nothing else will be able to do with, Gwen.
Shelby, what about you, any other agenda items you can think of?
Uh, no, not right now.
Okay. All right, then I would make a motion that we adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce. All those in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at 8:03, we'll call it.